July 21st. Borough Council Voting Session. First thing we're gonna do is do the Pledge of Allegiance, Mr. Flynn. Thank you, thank you. Next, we're gonna have comments from Borough Council and the Mayor. Did I miss something? Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, thank you. Item three, comments, suggestions, petitions by residents in attendance regarding items not on the agenda. Do we have anyone with business not on the agenda? Now we'll do comments from Council and Mayor. Ms. Dorsey, do you want to go first?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Braceley. Again, just want to welcome everyone to Borough Council. It's great to see everyone in person. Looks like we've got more attendance this month than we did last month. So hopefully, we will continue to be able to see your smiling faces. And as people continue to get vaccinated, and hopefully, we will not be impacted by the Delta variant here in Chester County. But again, just want to say welcome to the Borough Council meeting here in Westchester. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Owen.
Sure, don't have much today, just want to say same thing, welcome. It's always good to be back, I'm still getting used to it, for sure. And, you know, on behalf of Mr. Stefano, what is this, our last meeting until we're back? So enjoy the rest of your summer, everybody. I'll miss it.
Thank you, Mr. Stefano.
Yeah, this is our, yeah, this has been a, it's been a, I've been trying to enjoy my summer as much as possible, and I don't feel bad about it after last school year, but yeah. My, I don't have any comments, just please, if you're not vaccinated, get vaccinated. Numbers are rising, or starting to rise, and as they, from what I hear and what I read, it's all in the unvaccinated population. So please, get vaccinated so we can get past this and move on to all the other problems we have to deal with. Lastly, on the consent agenda, item number, or letter K, is approving a lot of musical on Gay Street, and I just wanted to say that I've tried to be upfront and honest that I gained financially from that, because I do play in town. If anybody on Council feels they need me to recuse myself, I'm happy to do it. If not, I don't, I've been upfront and honest, I don't feel like I need to, but if I hear no different, then I'm just gonna, okay, that's it, thank you.
With the others, I don't have a great deal to say, but I'm just finding it really wonderful to be back to in-person meetings, you know. One of the things I like is how you can, you know, chit chat with people before the meeting and after the meeting, and, you know, you can have a real personal experience here, which I really enjoy. So I'm glad we're all back, and I'm glad you're all here. Oftentimes, we have like two or three people here, so thank you for coming. Second of all, I just, I've been going to the last, been going to the Planning Commission meetings. Now, the Planning Commission, which I haven't done up until a couple months ago. The Planning Commission deals with construction projects, just development in the borough. And right now, what they're considering is what's gonna be built over on the Wyeth property. And what amazes me about a project like this are the thousands of little details and questions that need to be asked and answered. Some, so miniscule, you'd think, like, who cares? But in the overall scheme of things, it really really, really helps. It's just been an eye-opening experience for me, so. Not trying to make a point, just I've enjoyed it, I wish I had started doing it back in my first term. Thanks.
Thank you. I have a lot of very important things to say. I'm on summer vacation now, so I'm gonna wait till August, if you don't, thank you.
Thank you. Bear nor really.
Thank you, Mr. Braceley. First off, I want to extend a huge welcome to the Westchester Railroad Heritage folks and Westchester Railroad folks. And we have an agenda item on there, so I'm not gonna go too deep into that, except for to say thanks to your diligent work in preserving a vital piece of history in, in the borough, and potentially a vital piece of history in our future, and preserving the right-of-way. Your service is not lost on this council or this mayor, and we look forward to the proclamation here, coming up here soon. Also, just really excited about the vitality going on in the downtown. It's been a long time coming, and I think we are, we are coming out stronger than when we went in to COVID. And it's just great to see everybody out and about, and business returning to normal. Knock on wood there, Delta. At last, I want, I want to thank everybody that has had tremendous amount of efforts with regards to the police hirings. I'm happy to report we have three officer, officer candidates on the consent agenda that will be an excellent valuable addition to the Westchester Police Department. There's so many folks behind the scenes that we don't think about, that are involved in that process. The Civil Service Commission, Stacy Administration, the detectives doing background, you know, there's I'm not gonna try to, to name them all, because I'm not gonna be able to. So I want to thank everybody with that long, arduous process, including all the candidates that have been through the wringer and back and forth 100 times. So, and finally, I want to thank Borough Council for putting that on the consent agenda and agreeing to those hires, so thank you very much.
All right, bit of change of plans. Consultation with the Mayor. We're gonna go with item number seven first, because financial presentations may be potentially lengthy. So, seven first. This proclamation of the Westchester Railroad and Westchester Railroad Heritage Association.
Excellent, thank you very much. Is that a global mic there, if you pull that? My snack's out of here, all right. I'll start with this portion of it. I'll start with the proclamation here, and then I'm gonna ask some of the volunteers to come join me here in front of the dais for presentation of keys to the city. We have a proclamation for Westchester Railroad Appreciation Month for July 2021. It's been 25 years since the public-private partnership between the borough and Westchester Railroad and Westchester Railroad Association, First States and affiliates. I'm gonna dive right into the proclamation itself, bear with me. Whereas, on February 18th, 1831, foreshadowing the positive influence railroads would have on the economic future of Westchester Borough, committee led by Judge Isaac Darlington and comprised of the borough's leading families, was granted a state charter to build and operate the Westchester Railroad, connecting the borough to the main line at Westchester intersection, which is in Malvern. And whereas, on November 11th, 1858, the Westchester and Philadelphia Railroad extended a second railroad to Westchester from media, which, together with the Westchester Railroad, contributed to the growth and economic vitality of Westchester Borough well into the 20th century. And whereas, on October 26th, 1986, the Southeastern Pennsylvania Transportation Authority, SEPTA, the largest owner and operator of the Westchester branch suspended train service to Westchester Borough. And whereas, effective July 1st, 1996, five years ago, the Westchester Borough entered into a lease with SEPTA to protect the Westchester branch for future generations and provide its ongoing upkeep and maintenance. And whereas, on or about December 31st, 1996, Westchester Borough, with SEPTA's approval, entered into a sublease with four states railroad services of Yorkland, Delaware, doing business as Westchester Railroad, to maintain the Westchester branch in return for authority to operate tourist trains between Westchester and Glen Mills. And whereas, since September 21st, 1997, Westchester Railroad and its affiliate Westchester Railroad Heritage Association, 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization, have operated a popular and educational series of tourist trains over the Westchester branch, attracting tourists to Westchester Borough to the benefit of the local economy at no cost to the borough. And whereas, for the last, for the past quarter century, Westchester Railroad and Westchester Railroad Heritage Association volunteers have toiled tirelessly, maintained the Westchester branch right-of-way in impeccable condition through voluntary contributions of labor and material at no cost to the borough. Now, therefore, be it resolved, I, Jordan Norley, Mayor of Westchester, do hereby proclaim July 2021 as Westchester Railroad Appreciation Month, the Borough of Westchester. Thank you very much.
Hi, Beth. Could we have Joe and Ann, Jean Chino? Joe is the President of Four States Railroad, and Ann handles the special charters. Skip and Judy Small, General Manager of Westchester Railroad. They keep the railroad together and help whenever and wherever help is needed, including holiday charters and everything in between. Larry Jensen, Westchester Railroad Yard Master, original member of Westchester Railroad Heritage Association. Longtime volunteer and always there when needed. Beth Ann Keats, President of Westchester Railroad Association, known as Westchester Train Lady. John Anshon, Secretary of the Westchester Railroad Heritage Association and Glen Mills Station Master. Tyler Haney, Vice President of Westchester Railroad Heritage Association, and handles membership. He's not here. Give you an extra one for it. And there's so many other volunteers here, but, you know, the borough has some business to do. So I'm gonna provide Keys to the Cities to these wonderful volunteers who have throughout the last forever provided tremendous service to the borough. Congratulations. And just a tremendous team effort. I'll do this first, there you go, my pleasure. Thank you, thank everyone so much for your service. Really appreciate it, I mean, what, what all of these organizations have done and continue to do to provide service to the borough is really an impressive, ongoing feat. So thank you very much, everyone, for your service to the Borough of Westchester. And let me, let's get the rest of the volunteers up here, we'll do one big picture, and, and we'll get on with the rest of the borough business, how's that? Filter, filter in. Oh, we've, we've got other people. One around the other side. Thank you all again so much, and for the folks that weren't recognized personally. We certainly recognize your contributions as well. Thank you again for a wonderful partnership with the foresight that everyone's had and the teamwork that everyone's put together. Thank you very much for your continued service, appreciate it.
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, for recognizing the Railroad Association. We considered, and it's, I think it's on the agenda and the consent agenda, the grant application to, to get federal money, get more federal money, and it goes to Senator Casey, and that is money for the railroad line. And one paragraph in there says that this association, its contribute to the upkeep of the borough's leasehold is easily overlooked, but significant. Its volunteers locked nearly 26,000 hours of labor in 2020. According to the U.S. Department of Labor Bureau of Labor Statistics, the 2020 median pay for railroad workers is $387, applying that rate to this situation, of volunteers results in a monetized value of their work equivalent to $803,000 annually. So they're not just playing around here, they're really contributing to the borough, so I thank you for that.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. You know, when I came up on the dais here, I saw this coffee cup, and what I saw was the Borough logo. And it wasn't until, actually, just about two minutes ago, I noticed on the back, it's a railway cup. 25 years of public-private partnership, 1996, 2021, and I just want to thank you for this. Thank you, thank you very much. And thank you to the Mayor for the preceding proceedings.
My pleasure, thank you.
Okay, okay, let's move on. Well, before we do that, does anyone in the audience have any comments or questions? What we've done so far? Item number five, presentation by David Stimson from Mock and Halt, in that analysis of assumption changes with a 2021 actuarial valuation. This is going to be virtual, I understand, is that correct?
David, we're working on getting your audio up, just a second. Check the microphone settings on your end.
Works for me. We're moving to item number six. We're getting every, huh? Oh, Jeff, basically, getting, getting a report from Dale Umbenpower from Mailer LLP, 2020 financial statements, yeah.
So instead of standing up here and belaboring the financial statements like I've typically done in the past, I just created a small PowerPoint presentation with the pertinent facts of the audit, save a little bit of time. So the first slide is net position. So this is basically what's left after the liabilities are subtracted from the assets. This is the governmental activities and the business-type activities. So the business-type activities is the sewer and the parking, and governmental activities is everything else. So this is the net position for the past five years for each of the governmental activities and the business-type activities. So you can see back in 2016, we had $9.2 million of net position. And that kind of tapered down to about one and a half million in 2018, as now it's back on the rise. So we're back up to about $5.7 million for 2020. On the business side, the business activity side is pretty stagnant at $24 million, and it's just been kind of slowly increasing from $21.2 million back in 2016. Over on the next page, this is the changes in net position. Again, broken down between governmental activities and business-type activities. So our revenues for 2020 were $18,559,993, and our expenses were $18,173,030, for a net change of $386,960. We had transfers in of $2,542,453. So our change in the net position for the year was a positive about $3 million on the activity side. On the business-type activity side, we had revenues of $9.1 million, expenses of $6.3 million, net change of $2.8 million to the positive. Transferred out to the governmental activities, $2.5 million, for a positive net change of $286,797. The 2019 numbers are presented for comparative purposes. Over on the next slide, this is a slide about the general fund. And that's the main operating fund of the borough. So our total revenues, our final total budgeted revenues for 2020 were $14,227,17. The actual revenues were $15,547,808, for a positive budget variance of $1.3 million. Total expenditure final budget was $17,682,390. The actual expenditures were $18,439,167. That is a negative budget variance of $756,777. We budgeted for other financing sources of $3,461,673. We only actually brought in $2,622,330, for a negative budget variance of $839,343. What that means for the year is that we had a negative budget variance for the year of $269,029. Governmental fund balances, these are the fund balances of all the governmental funds. They're broken down according to the, the specific purpose of the fund that they're in. So we had non-spendable fund balance of $18,094. That represents prepaid expenses. We had restricted fund balance of $2,351,942. That is things that are restricted by law or by a grantor, i.e. the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania with fuels, and other grants like that are considered restricted. The assigned fund balance is $8,906,961. These are funds that were set aside by management for specific purposes. And the unassigned fund balance is a negative $9,159. So our total fund balance is $2,085,138. Over on the next slide, this is a summary of the required communications with the audit committee or the board yourselves. Audit was conducted in accordance with the U.S. generally accepted auditing standards, and we issued an unmodified opinion, which is considered a clean opinion. The objectives of an audit are to plan and perform the audit to obtain reasonable assurance about whether the financial statements are free of material misstatement. So what that says is in a nutshell, is with a clean opinion, that means that we were able to obtain reasonable assurance that the financial statements are not, that they are free of material misstatements. Last slide here, these are just more of the required communications. We talk about significant accounting policies. The significant accounting policies that the borough has are basically depreciation and the investment valuations, along with the pension and O-pays. Significant estimates, the three significant estimates for the borough are the depreciation expense, the pension liabilities and the related deferred outflows and inflows, and then the other post-employment benefit liabilities as related outflows and incomes. If we had had any disagreements or issues with management, I would have to report them to you now. We did not have any such difficulties or disagreements. And the audit adjustments that we found as part of the audit were posted by management. I want to take a minute to acknowledge the fact that this is the first year that we did not have a management letter with control deficiencies. Barbara has done a job, and I commend her efforts. And that's all I have. I am happy to answer any questions anybody has.
Mr. Braceley, may I speak? Dale, thank you for your diligence and helping out with the borough and our audits. I don't want council to, to take lightly the management statement. The management statement is a direct correlation to how bad our accounting department was and how good our accounting department is now. If I say something wrong, please correct me, because I try to be pretty accurate. When Ernie McNeely left, who was an excellent borough manager, his Chief of Finance had 21 infractions. Now, they're very large, they had to be repaired. Then Mr. Carter took over, stayed for a short while, and then Mr. Perone took over, and we still had to correct the past. And then we had three violations when Jeff was here, which were very difficult to correct. Now Barb has been here in the helm for one full year under her belt, and she's worked shorthanded with staff coming and going. And to have a zero management letter is like winning the Super Bowl. It's, it's unheard of, because mistakes happen, and the department, if they had mistakes, they corrected them. My fair, my assertion?
Yes.
Thank you very much, Barb, for all your hard work and your team, and Mr. Perone, thank you.
Just a quick question.
Yes.
When we say restricted, are contractual obligations considered restricted?
Yes.
Okay. So any of the, the union pay, for example, would be considered restricted?
Anything that is, anything that is contractually restricted or restricted by a gradtor, if you have spent bond proceeds, there's a restricted for the purpose of the bond, things like that.
Thank you, and congratulations to Borough Administration, Borough Finance for having a clean year. It really is an exceptional accomplishment.
Thank you. Mr. Owen?
Mr. Stone? I wanted to say a lot of the same. Been on a board that had a new treasurer with a much, 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 much lower budget, and watching the treasurer go through taking over books is a heroic task.
It's a hard undertaking.
Yeah, so to get through a full year and to have this be the result, I think is really excellent, so I want to thank you for that. And thank you for answering my questions throughout the year as well, especially given the pandemic. I'm really encouraged with a lot of the numbers that we saw, especially given our circumstances. So I appreciate everyone's flexibility with budgeting the past year and a half, and the finance committee's flexibility meeting a lot in 2020. And then the only questions I really had were about, can we go to the presentation? There was a slide that had, there was like the assigned, there was like $9 million, and then there was like a negative $9 million. Do you recall that?
Yes.
So the, the, I think the one was assigned. Is that mainly like capital reserve, because we've set that aside for capital purposes?
Things that are already...
Okay, and then the big negative number, is that what Mayor Norley was talking about?
Yeah, that's kind of just the residual.
Okay, all right.
Lack of a better word.
Yeah, I like the understand fully a number that's that large and negative, so thank you.
Does anyone have any questions or comments? I, I just have one. Has to do with Barb. Every time I come to the borough drawing, which is always an enjoyable experience for me, I always try to make sure I stick my head in her door and say, hey. But, you know, it's just the way she just turns out these numbers, I'm like, I don't know how she does it sometimes. I need two plus two, I need a calculator to add two plus two, so, and sometimes the answer's not right. So I, I have a great respect for that, so Barb, thank you, thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that has any questions or comments?
Thanks for your service.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Oh, I'm sorry, this, Mr. Scott's got some...
When we had that report from you all that had a whole lot of infractions on it, or whatever you call them, did you deliver that to us? Were you there that day?
I discussed it at the meeting.
Yes.
Comes in hard copy.
I mean, like five years ago or so. What?
Yeah.
You were here for that? Yeah.
I'm happy to have you deliver a good news.
He had a long tie on that night, but today he has a bowtie, so it's a short, short story.
Oh, you get better looking all the time, people are saying that. No, so that was a dramatic moment. I remember, I didn't get it, I mean, you know, there's some fractions, I figure everybody knows what they're doing. I said, how does that compare? And you said, well, if you have, you have three or four, that's tolerable. And what did we have, 21? Everybody gasped. And so I'm just repeating here what Chairman Flynn said. Everybody appreciates where we are now, I think. Thanks to everybody who got us there, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Dale.
All right.
Do we have Mr. Stimson on the line yet?
Can you hear me now? Hello?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Sorry about that. Not had trouble, but I don't think I've used WebEx before. So, all right, so you have up the July 2nd assumption study letters that we sent to you. I believe Colleen has presented the recommended changes in the actual assumptions before. So I'll just go through those quickly and ask questions if you have any questions. We're recommending lowering the inflation assumption at pretty much all the economic assumptions because of the inflation assumptions, 25 basis points from 2.75 to 2 and a half. Because of the, you know, we did a survey of, of investment managers used by our clients. And, you know, we, the interest rate assumption, which is the expectation of future investment performance over the long term, we're recommending lowering that from 7% to 6.75% per year. Basically, coming off of two years of great investment returns, the expectations in the future were not what they have been in the past. Changing the salary increase assumption, lowering it 25 basis points for both plans. For the police plan, they, we have an additional assumption of an additional 10% in the final year based on the analysis of retirements, increasing that to additional 15% in the final year. And then updating the mortality assumption. The public plans mortality tables came out about three years ago. So it's the most recent mortality study of public pension plans, mortality experience. So we're recommending you updating the mortality assumption, although we're put, building in a little buffer of a five-year lag in mortality improvement into that assumption to take into account recent period of stagnant mortality improvement. And then in the police plan, updating the disability assumption from the 2010 Social Security Administration's long-range demographic assumptions to the 2020 Social Security Administration's assumptions. So the, the last page of the study chart shows the results of the plan. The results as of January 1, 2019 are shown for comparison purposes. The top portion of that chart shows the status of plan, the unfunded liability. And then the bottom portion is the net annual cost or estimated MMO. There was, there were large experience gains in both plans. For the police plan, there was about a $3.2 million experience gain. The primary sources were about, were the same for both plans. It was investment return was the overriding factor. There were also salary gains in both plans and contribution gains because you put in more than the MMO for both plans. As you can see, the, the costs of, of the plan are going down significantly. The, the assumption changes will increase the cost, but they should still end up lower than they would be based on the 2019 valuation. For the police plan, the, well, you have the general plan up. The, for the non-uniform plan, the, the cost would be going from, going down $200,000 if you didn't accept the changes, and going down about $100,000 even with the recommended changes. A similar story on the police plan. The cost would be going down over $300,000 under the old assumptions and over $100,000 with the recommended assumptions. Now, assumption decisions should not, I have to say this as an actuary, assumption decisions should not be made on the basis of what it costs. They should be based, the actual assumption should be based on the best estimates of future occurrence. Because over time, you, the experience of the plan will determine the cost of the plan. And when experience is better than projected, then costs will go down over time. When experience is worse than projected, then costs go up over time. So it is in, in your best interest to have your assumptions be the best estimates of future occurrence. Any questions?
Mr. Stimson, this is Bernie Flynn. Good evening. How, how's the, the additional payments that we've been making with our EIT? Has that significantly, significantly helped the pension program for our employees? I think we've been adding to it for the last two and a half years to, to try to, to raise the percentage for our retirees. I'm specifically asking how the EIT additional payments have been helping the plan.
Oh, that is definitely helping. Like I said, there were, there was a large experience gain in both plans. And the large, you know, in the police plan, there was a $3.2 million experience gain. In the general plan, it was about a $1.8 million experience gain. The largest portion of the, of that was investment gains. But also contributing to that gain were the contributions that were greater than actuarially required, as I put it in the letter, which are those additional, that additional money above and beyond the MMO going into the plan. And also salary increases that were lower than assumed was the third source of gain. So it was the, investment gain was the largest source of that experience gain. And that experience gain is why, under the old assumptions, you're seeing in the general plan, the funded ratio going from 77% to 89%. 86.7% under the recommended assumptions. And are you still there?
Yes, we're, we're all listening with bated breath as, as we're hearing the good news, because tonight's a, a good news night for the borough.
Yes, yes, it is. And in the police plan, sorry, my computer had frozen there for a couple of seconds. In the police plan, the funded ratio is going from 78% to 91% under the old assumptions, or 88% under the recommended assumptions, which we are recommending to change. But even so, going from 77% to 88% is a rather large jump. The largest portion of that is at the investment gain, but also contributing to that were the higher than, putting in more than the MMO. And yes.
Thank you very much.
Hi, this is Jordan Norley, couple of questions. So inflation has been going up significantly. Inflation was, the Fed's target is 2%. Bureau of Labor Statistics just reported last 12 months inflation at 4.5%. And that excludes food and energy. And while some of that may be temporary, based on the supply chain issues and such, we also have 6.1% increase in wage growth, which will not be temporary last 12 months. So my question is, how are we decreasing the inflation rejection at this stage? Also, when we know that the Fed's primary tool to protect against a hot economy is increasing interest rates as well?
Well, I'm deferring to the experts here. Even at 2.5% inflation, we are higher than most of the experts out there. Like I said, we did this survey of, of investment managers, and the average long-term, and long-term to them is about 20 years. Inflation assumption was about 2.14% or 2.15% as of 11/2021. I actually sat in on a webinar at the beginning of the month with five economists talking. And the webinar was all about inflation, five different economists, five different points of view. But they all said that this inflation this year is temporary. Whether it's, you know, some thought it was a one-year blip. Some thought it was going to be a two-year, two years of high inflation, but they all were 2.5%. Most of them were in the 2 to 2.25% long-term inflation. I think one or two were even lower. So I, I get it, and I, and that's kind of why we're higher than most of the experts that I have heard and gotten input from. But the 2.75 seems to be, you know, I can vary from the experts a little bit, but I don't want to get too far from, from what the consensus is. So that's why we're coming down to 2.5% inflation.
What, when was the data that you're filed, that you're basing your recommendation on?
The survey of investment managers that we did was at the beginning of the year, and we asked for their capital market assumptions as of January 1, 2021. And the average of the responses that we got was 2.14 to 2.15%.
Is it possible that some of that data is old?
Well, this is an evaluation as of January 1, 2021, so we're trying to use the best estimates of expectations as of that date. There, there is a lot of uncertainty. And one of the, the webinar that I sat in on at the beginning of the month, you know, one of the economists even said, you know, the word of the day for him was humility. And that's not something that's often heard about from economists, because they always think that, you know, they have the model, they know what the answer is. And he said, what's going on right now? There is no precedent for, he said, coming out of World War II is probably the closest comparison, but that doesn't even fit, this doesn't even fit that model. So yes, there could be runaway inflation. I certainly think that's possible, but I, when I look at the experts and read the experts, nobody gives that a very high percentage chance of happening.
Fair enough, and just as a point clarification, wage growth is not temporary. The, the other aspects tend to be temporary, wage growth does not to be temporary. In June alone, wage growth was up 1.1%, so I would question...
But Jordan, he's looking at, he's looking at our contracts. We have two years left on our contracts, or none of our contracts are anticipating 6% raises in any...
Right, I, I understand.
That's what he's taking, he gets.
And just sort of bringing assumptions down on a basis.
Well, and this is, this is, the assumptions are revisited every two years. The, the calculations that they, they use the assumption for are for a 20-year... So anybody disagrees that inflation's up? As of January 1st, it was 2% range, now it's higher. Half, now it's again in 2023. Assumptions.
And just that this goes into obviously planning, when we're talking about cash flow planning, because these assumptions go into what are, object for our inflows and such. So just wanted to bring it up, and that can make... But inflation is, is rising, there's no doubt about it. We should plan for the reality.
Mr. Stimson, do you have anything else to share with us?
No. That is all I had to present. If, you know, I, I can talk, if you have any questions, yeah, that's, that's all I brought to present.
Thank you very much, let me just try, is there anyone in the audience that has any questions or comments about Mr. Stimson has presented? So we don't have any questions from the audience, so I guess, I guess we're good.
Okay. Okay.
Is this something we take action on? Or is this something that is just presented, we have to take it? I don't.
Oh, the, every, every two years, the actuarial folks re-evaluate our pension plans and assumptions. They're making recommendations here, 1, 2, 3, and 4 for Borough Council to consider.
Something to take action on tonight? Or should this go back through Finance Committee? I feel like it should, I feel like committees should have a crack at it.
I think we have time for, for next month, for August, to go through it. You hate to make, Mr. Simpson said, assumptions. Because I don't know exactly what we're really looking at, real dollars. We don't spend percentages, we spend dollars. And that's, that's the important factor that we're looking.
Yeah, I didn't realize we were to take action on this. So this month would be great. Mr. Simpson, if you, unless you have anything further that you would do. And thank you very much for all your efforts on behalf of Borough.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Have a good evening. What's left of it?
You too.
Thank you. Okay, the next item is item number eight. A appointment to the Westchester Library Board of Directors. We interviewed two candidates last night. Warren Groh, Matthew Cooper. And it just happens so often, both are really good candidates. Council have any thoughts on either one?
I, I thought, I agree, they're both fantastic candidates. It sounded like Ms. Groh, it still serves on the Railroad Restoration Committee. I think considering that, considering that Mr. Cooper has been attending the library meetings and trying to keep up with it and being, you know, abreast of everything going on there, I, I would recommend, or I make a motion to extend the position to Mr. Cooper.
I agree. I second Mr. Stefano's recommendation.
Okay.
You seconded the motion?
So could you call a question?
Ms. Dorsey? Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Mr. Stefano?
Yes.
Mr. Allen? Mr. Scott?
Hi.
Mr. Brace.
All right, so Matthew Cooper it is. And contact him to let him know the outcome of this evening's vote. Unless anyone has any comments, questions. We're going to move on to item number six. Yeah, approve live streaming Borough Council meetings on YouTube or Facebook. I'm looking at. I was looking up last night's meeting so I can get them names correct. Thanks. Yeah, okay. Item 8B, thank you. Approve ordering 2022 leased vehicles not to exceed $70,000. It's up on the screen. What this basically is, is we would be leasing, if at, at least in the beginning, our police vehicles. Does this extend to other Borough vehicles also to start with? Okay. So anyone on council have any further comments?
Yeah, I put this on discussion. I spent a lot of time, I was up very late last night, looking over my notes from last year when we went over this. And to be quite honest, I'm a little bit more optimistic about it than I was last night. There's a little bit more flexibility, because it's like the open-ended lease structure, like the presentation we got last week indicated, which I think is a little bit more attractive to me. I did have a handful of questions still, though. I'll just try to go through them quickly. My first one is, what does it look like for us to turn back from this after a year to do that?
We can get out of it. Mr. Prin, what timeframe would we have if we wanted to not use them anymore?
We can cancel the contracts at any time.
What does that mean for our fleet? If we're, we have 12 cars that are one year into this lease? What, what kind of financial steps would we need to take after we cancel the contract in order to make sure we still have enough vehicles?
Purchase them all, buy, buy out the leases, push capital out. Turn the cars and sell them.
Okay. And then after, I'm assuming after five years or whatever, once our fleet is complete, like completely leased, that would be an even bigger hurdle to back out of it. Is that, I mean, I understand we can sell it, right? So yours, we have the equity in the car, what we've put into them.
Vehicles will always have value. Too long. Doing today is we're keeping them for very long. For instance, if you sold a, say if we get, if you had a lease vehicle 2022, that's a hybrid. You sold that three years down the road of original price tag, maybe 60, 65,000. Plenty of other municipalities, governmental agencies, or even folks who just like fast cars, those police cars are fast cars. They bought a secondary car. Those vehicles you could probably sell for $50,000.
Laughing because I love the Blues Brothers, but anyway. So when we talked about this last year, there was, it's like the full maintenance program that I think was like $60 a month per car. Is that still part of this agreement?
Yeah, the maintenance contract is still part of it. And I didn't ask Jason to come here tonight. He knows it's folded into the lease price.
Okay. And then we talked about using our shop and how that's approved by Enterprise now. Are we, we're paying monthly for the service to the vehicles. But then if we're doing it ourselves in our own shops, are we getting some of that money back from Enterprise?
The, the intent is only to use the lease vehicles to use the shop. The only thing they're doing, they're, they're going to do minor stuff. Equals they're all going to be warranty, getting five-year warranties, placing tires, Jason said, like a windshield wiper blades, occasions, maybe brakes. These, the, I, discussions have gone on so long, I, to get paid by Enterprise to our shop.
Okay, that was, yeah, that was my real question. And then is, is that going to? Okay. And then do we, I'm trying to remember what the status is. Do we have full-time mechanics right now? So how many?
I know we have one out on the department's comp, and I believe two. So we have a, when we have a full complement, it's three.
Is that, do we expect that to change?
Not for the next, you know, two, three, four years, I would say. After that, change.
And then I think one of the things that, I mean, I found interesting was a lot of our, I know we've talked about going over budget with our repairs and all that kind of stuff. And I just want to stress that there's a lot of the repairs that are not covered by the agreement that we're still going to be making related to like any collision or anything insurance-related. Get one set of brakes and a set of tires, which for that amount of time is fine. But I'm trying to think. So the, I guess like the reservations that I've had is a lot of the, the positive elements to the Enterprise lease agreement seem like we already have. Like we can already buy through CoStar and sell through them. We are already doing a lot of the work in-house. A lot of the maintenance is done in-house. The fact that we're selling the cars earlier, my mind is something we could agree to do as council. That a policy that we try to do moving forward without involving third-party organization. But I understand that there's like cash flow considerations where we get to just jump out of the gate and get in 14 new cars, which is great. And I think, as we heard from Lieutenant Lee last night, like employees will definitely appreciate that, which is important. I just would have liked to see us, especially as we're looking at removing like the silos, the way we've siloed all our vehicles, and we're potentially looking at redoing how we organize our fleet, which I think is a great idea to be more efficient. I would have liked to see a comparison, like what would it look like for us to do all of these good ideas on our own without getting another organization involved? And then compare that with what Enterprise is offering. And then I think lastly, a lot of the projections we're using are coming from Enterprise, which has me a little bit nervous because their job is to sell the contract. That's what they are interested in doing. And I looked at some of their like depreciation estimates after five years, and it was around like 35%, which seems optimistic. They only, the only stuff I got was about a Ford F-150, which, I mean, they retain their value very well. So I don't think that's super unrealistic, but I do wonder about like sedans, other vehicles like that. And then they also include a lot of projections about our admin costs. They assume that we're spending 1,200 a year on a car for preventive maintenance. And then they, their MPG assumptions, I think, are a little bit interesting. But, but yeah, I'm just, I'm nervous about jumping into this having Enterprise's numbers on a lot of those assumptions. So I think that's my big reservation. I am cautiously more optimistic about the program. And I think in terms of the next couple of years, I definitely see where it makes sense. But I do worry about it long-term. And I'm wondering if there's a way we can take a longer-term look once we've restructured our fleet and we can revisit this in like a year or two. And, and see if this is something that actually makes sense permanently. That's all I got.
I, I remember when this came up last time, and I don't remember, you had the exact same concerns back then. And I think as we heard last night, Enterprise is the state sanctioned, it's been sanctioned by the state. And we got, what, five responses, I think. Enterprise is giving us the best deal. It's definitely a new direction to go in, which I support. But I don't know that there's another company out there that is going to provide what Enterprise seems to be offering us. If I'm wrong, somebody jump in. But I think we should proceed with this.
Mr. Brace, and Mr. Allen, thank you for your due diligence on the situation. Also, as a side note, the County of Chester uses Enterprise leasing, at least their vehicles. So, and we did check with them. And if there was any blips, they will be very forthcoming telling us that they've had problems or no problems with Enterprise. So with that being said, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the Borough Manager to order the 14 vehicles from Enterprise leasing for the year 2022.
Sure.
Okay, we have, we have a motion on the floor. It's been seconded. Any further discussion by members of council? Any comments from the audience?
Mr. Brace, I just had a question. This is all relatively new to me. I wasn't here for last year's discussion. And there's a lot of information to digest. And admittedly, I did not do the level of analysis that Mr. Mr. Allen did, but I certainly appreciate the work that he put in. And the thing that jumped out at me last night was, you know, and I think Mr. Allen said is this, has, have we done our due diligence with the numbers and comparison and can say that this really is the best economical solution for us at this time? I didn't see that in any of the documentation that was presented.
Ms. Dorsey, the ongoing meetings.
Okay, I think I can answer that. With, when I sent this out a couple ago, week and a half ago, five-year savings to the Borough, leasing versus the way we were purchasing vehicles today, Borough will save 600 some dollars.
So that number that's in the presentation from Enterprise is a real number? It's not a guesstimate?
The numbers from Enterprise were derived from Enterprise meeting with Jason Barnes himself over two years, just like the mechanics numbers. They're real numbers of parts and loss of our mechanics. I'm just pulling numbers out of.
Thank you.
Let's have a question. If, if our, the amount of time and effort that our mechanics no longer have to spend on older vehicles, is there a potential cost savings from a capital standpoint?
Potentially, yes. However, I just want to caution. We're not there yet. There in a year, two years. If you were here, public safety, fire chiefs, you know, got, said that the fire vehicles weren't being taken care of as well as. So that may, should free up mechanics' time to, let's say, take better care of the fleet.
And that cost then be passed on to the townships that we contract fire services for, third person.
Thank you. Any other comments? Can you call a question, please?
Yes, Ms. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Flynn? Mr. Stefano?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
No.
Mr. Scott? Mr. Brace?
Yes. So, yes, it's 5-1. Hey. Next item is the set agenda.
Item?
I second that.
Ms. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Mr. Stefano?
Yes.
Mr. Allen? Mr. Scott?
Hi.
Mr. Brace?
Yes. Thank you. Item number M is approved with you, let's strike that. Item number 10 is other business. Do we have any other business? Mr. Hudson?
Hi, Kyle Hudson, Westchester Chronicle. I have a question. I'm sure many of you are aware that the eviction deadline is ending at the end of the month. I brought this issue up to you in April of last year, and I asked you to come up with something. So I was just wondering if the Borough has come up with any plan to help the about 5,000 members of our community who are facing eviction at the end of this month? And if so, if not, is there anything that maybe the Borough could do? And if so, if not, is there anything that maybe the Borough could do to get the word out about providing help for these folks? And I'm just wondering where you guys are at that, you know, year and a half later?
I think, I think the, our IT department posted on our Facebook, or, excuse me, our website, information that the county has assistance programs, and my understanding is they're going to do some of their federal same thing.
Yes, um, yes. So it's just on the website, that's all? And what's the traffic for the website? Do you know, like weekly traffic? Oh, Mr. Mann isn't here. Okay. Is that it? That's all we got? All right, thank you.
All right, thank you. Unless there's any other business? We're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.